Thank you. As we begin the forum again, I'd like to remind the audience to please turn your cell phones back off. The recording of the forum is copyrighted to the League of Women Voters 2025. Personal recording or pictures are not allowed. Please remain silent and hold your applause until the end of the forum. If you have questions, please raise your hands and our pages will come to collect them. There are five candidates for the City Commission. They are Andrew Haig, Bill Kolb, Kevin Kozlowski, and Doug White. Zachary Jennings is also running, but he is not in attendance tonight, and I will read his statement for him. The candidates will have one minute for opening statements, starting in alphabetical order with Mr. Haig.
Thank you. So I'm going to start with thanks. First of all, to the League of Women Voters, in particular Christine and Deborah, who put lots of time and energy into the election in this panel. Rebecca Kraft, the Library Staff and Library Board, for allowing us to use this space. I'm glad we were actually able to attend the Library Board panel because originally we weren't going to be able to, but that was very good to be able to listen to them. It's a reminder that we are a small community despite being a city, because I got three friends in that election, and it was really nice to be able to be able to support them. And last of all, I want to thank all of you for being engaged. So I've lived here for close to 17 years. I moved to Birmingham before I even had a family, so I could actually bring up my family in the community I wanted to be in. I'm the only incumbent in the election, and I've spent four years working for all of you, and I'm really looking forward to continuing what I've started, because I don't think one term is enough to do the job properly. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Kolb?
Thank you. Like Andrew, can you hear me? Can you hear me okay?
Not great.
There we go. Like Andrew, I'd like to thank the League of Women Voters for setting this up and BPL for hosting us. It's an honor to be here. My name is Bill Kolb. The most important thing to know about me is I'm father to two wonderful daughters, and even more proud of the fact that I have two grandkids. Unfortunately, they both live in London. But that's what I'm most proud of. I have been living in Birmingham for 16 years. I recently retired and recommitted to living here till the end of my time, which hopefully is a while yet, and have started to get involved in a lot of what goes on in the city and finding how wonderful a community this is and kind of the infinite opportunities that are in this city. It would be my honor to be able to serve and work for all the residents, represent all the residents of Birmingham. That's the job of the City Commission, to remember, represent each person's voice and what they want for the city, and then deliberate that with the other commissioners. So before I get the 15-second sign, I'll end my sentence, but thank you, and thank you for participating in democracy. It's how it's supposed to work.
Thank you. Mr. Kozlowski?
Good evening, everyone. First, let's turn this on. There we go. First, I'd like to thank the League of Women Voters, like my friends over here, for hosting this event and all of you for attending it. My name is Kevin Kozlowski. I was born in Huntington Woods and grew up in Rochester Hills. My wife Jess and I actually started dating when we were at Adams High School. I earned my bachelor's in math from the University of Michigan and my master's in finance from Case Western. I then started my career as a software developer. I worked for Bloomberg in New York, then Amazon in Boston, and now I work remotely for Glencoe Software. After about a decade moving around for work, my wife and I decided to move back home to start a family, and we chose Birmingham because of its walkability, its beautiful parks, its amazing schools, and its vibrant downtown. We bought a home in Poppleton Park and welcomed two children, Blaze and Stella. To give back to the city, I've been serving on Birmingham's Advisory Parking Committee, where I'm currently serving as the chair. I am running to make Birmingham a great place for my kids to grow up in and for my wife and I to grow old, and I'm committed to bringing a combination of dedication, vision, pragmatism, and analytical rigor to the City Commission, and it would be my honor to serve. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. White?
Good evening, everybody. My name is Doug White, and I've lived on Holland Street in the rail district for the past 20 years. I'm married to my awesome wife Joy, who's here with me tonight. There she is. Best wife and best mother ever in the history of ever. I really mean that. Our two daughters, Emma and Claire, attended Pierce, Covington, Derby, and Seeholm, and both of them spent a lot of time right here at the library. At least that's what they told us. I'm a proud veteran, and I served as a U.S. Army officer on active duty and finished my career in the reserves. I've served as our Torrey Community Association Vice President and President, as President of Birmingham's largest community association, had the opportunity to be part of city meetings where I met some of our local officials and learned about volunteer board opportunities here in Birmingham. I was then appointed by the City Commission to the Multimodal Transportation Board. I was subsequently reappointed for a second term and elected by my peers as Board Chairperson. This was an incredible learning experience, which gave me deeper insight into how our city works. We live in a really wonderful community. I'm running because I love Birmingham. I'm excited about the future. I want to share my experience and ideas to help make our city even better for generations to come.
Thank you. And now I'll read the statement from Zach Jennings. "Good evening, everyone. My name is Zach Jennings, and I'm proud to be running for City Commissioner of Birmingham. Like so many of you, I care deeply about keeping Birmingham the vibrant, welcoming, and walkable community we all love. My biggest focuses are to find ways to actively involve and respect the community's voice and ensure safety during high-traffic volume and parking. I want to continue to make Birmingham as special as it is now while making sure it's a safe place for all who live and visit. While I don't have political experience, I want to learn and help Birmingham continue to be a place we're proud to call home by making sure that city decisions are transparent and fiscally responsible." Thank you. Okay, we will now begin the question and answers segment of the forum. Excuse me, answers will be approximately one minute, and we will begin the first question for Mr. Kolb. Do we have a... Oh, sorry. That...
You need a throat mint? I've got some with... I learned this the hard way.
No, no, thank you. I have. I was just a little surprised. "Do we have a plan if ICE comes to Birmingham?" Mr. Kolb, you can answer that first.
ICE. Can you repeat that?
Yes. "Do we have a plan if ICE comes to Birmingham?"
ICE the people?
So here's what I'd say is, not that I'm specifically aware of, but for the record, they've already come. Maybe not en masse, but I know two people who have been taken and moved. So no, I'm not aware of a plan.
Thank you. Mr. Kozlowski?
No, I am also not aware of an existing plan. Yeah, I think we are fortunate that we are probably not in the sights of ICE. I don't think we are a target-rich environment for them, to put it that way, but I think it is probably something worth exploring, how we should consider that possibility.
Thank you. Mr. White?
I'm not aware of any plan for ICE if they come to town, but like Kevin, we should probably have some loose plan in place in the off-chance that something happens here.
Thank you. And Mr. Haig?
So as the only incumbent City Commissioner, I can tell you, there's been no discussion within the commissioners. There are three other commissioners in the room who have got equally blank faces. So as far as I know, there's no plan, but it's also somewhat of a conflation of national politics and municipal politics.
Thank you. Next question will begin with Mr. Kozlowski. "Birmingham touts itself as a walkable community, but walking here is sometimes treacherous, especially walking across Woodward Avenue. What do you think we can do to improve the situation?"
Well, I live right off of Woodward Avenue, so I'm familiar with a lot of the problems, particularly with crossing. I think that in the short run, it's difficult to do anything because Woodward is a state road and MDOT is not forthcoming with changes, but I know that Ferndale made some really, what I think are generally very good changes, in particular, I think the most important of which is they reduced it from eight lanes to six lanes. I don't think that Woodward's current traffic levels merit an eight-lane road. It ends up functioning as more like a freeway or a drag strip sometimes, and it makes crossing it extremely difficult and dangerous. Crossing at Maple, you basically have to run if you want to make it in one light. So that is something that I would absolutely push for. I would push to increase the number of crossings. Sometimes you have to walk a really long distance in between crossings. And like I said, I would work on the light timings as well. Those are probably more short-term, more feasible things. It should be possible to get across Woodward without spending five minutes waiting at red lights.
Thank you. Mr. White?
Sure. Like Kevin, I live close to Woodward, and I do cross every once in a while to go to the other side, if you will. And it is like a racetrack there sometimes, but if you're in the crosswalk, you do have to hurry a little bit to get across. I have to pick up the pace a little bit to make it, and sometimes I get caught in the middle there. So like Kevin said, it's a state-controlled road, very difficult to get them to do anything on that regard, but I think I would like to think at a minimum, we could work with them to perhaps extend the crossing time, so nobody gets caught in the middle. You can get across fairly easily. So like I told you in my opening remarks, I spent six years on the Multimodal Board, trying to keep this as a walkable community, and that issue had come up many times before. So working with the state, really kind of our only option, unless there are things we can do on our own.
Thank you. Mr. Haig?
This comes up fairly frequently, and yes, it is an MDOT road. Biggest thing that we could try influencing them about is actually crossing times, to try and increase those. Traffic volume, the traffic volume and speeds, we were advised by MDOT that under the current rules, if we do a traffic study, the speed limit will go up, not down, because it's just how the maths works. It's as simple as that. So we avoided doing that so that we won't force a speed limit increase. Now, two years ago, we also looked at whether we could revitalize the tunnel that goes under Woodward. Some of you know about that. Unfortunately, we can't. It's currently being used for an awful lot of conduits and pipework, so we can't do that. We have looked at it. We do continue to look at it. We will continue to look at it. MDOT are a partner. We have to remember that. They give us $3 million a year towards our roads, so we have to be careful about how we negotiate with our partners. But there is definitely room for improvement, and I am an absolute supporter of that.
Thank you. And Mr. Kolb?
Can you just repeat the whole question again?
I will, yes. "Birmingham touts itself as a walkable community, but walking here is sometimes treacherous, especially walking across Woodward Avenue. What would you do to improve this situation?"
So from my point of view, I would support those things that we can do easily on our own. I think there are other priorities in the city that we need to focus on over this, but things like light timing that are relatively straightforward and highly cost-effective. I would be fully supportive of those, but I think there are other priorities that need attention.
Thank you. Next question will begin with Mr. White. "What should be done about flooding in residents' basements?"
Oh, boy. That's a great question, because that's one of the things that I hear about as I've been on the campaign trail here, talking to the fellow residents. Our infrastructure needs are real, and the cost and the need is growing. We're going to spend like 18.4 million this year, 4.5 million per mile to do the unimproved roads. That includes top to bottom, so that infrastructure, and it needs to be replaced. Here's what I saw. They're digging up a... They're building a house next to me, so they had to dig up the road to get into the sewer. And before I even started on this City Commission campaign, I stood out there and talked to the guy, and he showed me, like you see in a geology class. You see, here's the water pipe from the '20s, here's the sewer pipe from the '30s, here it is from the '50s, here it is from the '60s, here it is from the '80s, here's what we're doing now. So that's got to be addressed. So we've got to do our part, and I think that our partners that we work with, the county and the different boards, we've got to work with them to make sure that we're not overloading the system, and we're doing everything we can to make sure that what we're moving gets to the right place and eliminates those backups.
Thank you. Mr. Haig?
We were lucky to have Jim Nash, the Oakland County Water Commissioner, come to our city in the last few weeks, and I think it was very helpful for everybody to understand that we're not an island by ourselves. We're part of an interconnected network. What they explained to us is very simple. We could do all sorts of things to help us, and as soon as it hits our city border, it hits the bottleneck. So we would then back up again. So what we're trying to do within the city, what we want to continue doing, is improving what we can do in our hands, such as permeable space with building, to make sure that there is enough space for water to actually be absorbed and not just runoff, because if it goes into the drains, that's where it's going into people's basements. We know that. We've tripled our infrastructure spend in the last four years. We're going to keep trying to improve that. That's one of my goals. It's clearly stated. It's in the question hours. So are we trying? Yes, we are. Can we keep going? We've got a long way to go, and that's part of my goal, is to try and spend that money wisely so that we don't end up with yet more problems, because we thought we fixed a local problem, but it's part of the network.
Thank you. Mr. Kolb?
I would say everything Andrew said, verbatim. I think it is one of the most important things that we got to address in Birmingham. It impacts so many residents, but I think the city has done a very good job each year, spending a little bit more to solve a greater distance of the infrastructure challenge.
Thank you. And Mr. Kozlowski?
Yes, so I also agree with what Commissioner Haig said. I think that it's important to think that there are both short-term solutions here and longer-term solutions, and the short-term solutions do include things that focus on permeability, because the issue here is often that the storms we're getting are really intense but pretty short, and the issue is that all of the water is hitting the system at once. And so if we can do things, use rain barrels, use bioswales, use permeable pavers instead of a driveway, so some of that water can seep into the ground instead, all of these things will slow the rate at which this water hits our system and will make it easier for us to process. And those are things that we can encourage current homeowners to do, and we can put requirements on new construction, especially things that have a lot of impermeable surface. In the long term, yeah, I agree with Commissioner Haig that we are part of a network, but I think that it still behooves us to... Oakland County said at this meeting that their pipes have capacity, so I think we need to start at that capacity and slowly work our way outward towards where people are having flooding problems, increasing our capacity to feed into that system. So it's a long-term solution, but I think we need to get started.
Thank you. The next question will begin with Mr. Haig. "Surrounding communities have strong senior centers. The issue of a permanent home for NEXT seems to be continuously unanswered. What is your stance?"
It's not even a stance. It's a statement of fact. We have a home. There was only one reason why the city purchased the building at 400 East Lincoln, why MCA chose for business reasons to leave the city. They offered it to us. The city didn't need the building for the city. We bought it so that we could have a home for our senior center, because they were going to have to leave Midvale School. So I don't really understand why the question keeps coming back, because it's been said, there is a written agreement. There is a statement from the seniors that they wish to comply with the memorandum of understanding. They have a home. They actually have two homes in 2026, because they don't have to leave Midvale until '27. So they've got two homes. There is a continuity there. We made sure of it. So support for it? I voted for it. I voted for buying the building.
Thank you. Mr. Kolb?
So I think with this, I think a bunch of issues have gotten conflated and stories have been built up over time. To Andrew's point, I think the city's done a great job providing and clearly communicating to NEXT that they have a home and putting money where the mouth is. So those services they provide to residents of Birmingham are taken care of, and I would commend the current commission for doing what they've done. So I am supportive of NEXT and all its services, and they have a home. It's all good.
Thank you. Mr. Kozlowski?
I think there probably is still work to be done there. I feel that, you know, we just given the timeline, the reality of the situation is that, yes, NEXT is going to move into 400 East Lincoln. There simply is not time to build them a new home on that property, even if we wish to do so. But there are a lot of concerns about that building. That is part of the reason the Y is leaving, and that is part of the reason why we were considering demoing it in the first place. And I definitely have concerns about the longevity. The plan is to mothball a huge part of the building. That could create additional maintenance issues, and the building is expensive to maintain as it is. So I think it would behoove the incoming commission to at least explore the possibility of a new facility on that same piece of land that is in scope with what NEXT needs right now, but do a phased construction, because NEXT is also growing very quickly. And so we need to be able to provide the services that NEXT gives residents now and be prepared for future growth as well.
Thank you. Mr. White?
I'm a big supporter of NEXT. I spent some time here learning, learning about NEXT as I came on the campaign trail. I was just down to visit my parents this past weekend. My dad's 85. I wish they had something like this. I wish they had any of the services that NEXT provide. It's unbelievable how important that is. Here's what I think we ought to do. Time is not our friend on this. We've got about 16 months before NEXT has to be out of Midvale. We have an MOU that we can execute. Here's what I say we do. Let's let NEXT move into 400 East Lincoln. Let's spend that 3.7 million that we've already accrued. Let Chris Braun and her team, they're experts at doing a lot with a little. Let them get in there, see what they can do with that money. Let the commission move to the side and figure out what the long-term plan is. Are we going to build something? Are we going to renovate? But it'll take the pressure off NEXT. Let them get in there and start operating, and then work with the commission, the residents, NEXT, to find the most optimal plan. That'll give us a little breathing room, and we could have a world-class facility there, and that's what I'm hoping for.
Thank you. Next question will begin with Mr. Kolb. "The state budget cuts revenue sharing to municipalities. What will you do to address the funding gap?"
There's a whole bunch of levers, and I'm not going to speculate on the levers that we have to pull, but I ran a $2.5 billion global business. I am sure there are very logical, non-punitive ways to... creates the wrong word, but find and identify areas that will close that gap.
Thank you. Next, Mr. Kozlowski?
Yeah, so I think some of the biggest levers we have to pull, I mean, the number big, one biggest one is property taxes. Now, I, and I think most Birmingham residents feel that we already pay quite a lot, so I think the solution there is to lean more into increasing the size of the tax base. Now, there already exists a Triangle District Plan that says that the area across Woodward from downtown could be developed more, and that's something that I think we should be looking for more, we should be exploring more seriously. I mean, there's a big empty lot right at the southeast corner of Maple and Woodward. That feels like a total shame for that to just be a gravel lot instead of a tax-paying entity, or at least a significant one. So I would favor trying to push for development in these mixed-use commercial areas, try to beef up our tax base, and that way we can shore up our revenues without having to increase millage rates on residents.
Thank you. Mr. White?
Can you repeat the question?
Sure. "The state budget cuts..." I did it again. "The state budget cuts revenue sharing to municipalities. What will you do to address the funding gap?"
One thing I've heard loud and clear from all the residents I've talked to is there's not a big appetite for new taxes, for increased taxes. So we've got to buckle down, got to look at every expenditure, got to look at every revenue source, and find a way to bridge that gap. We have a lot of smart people in this town. That's the other thing that I'm realizing, people with all kinds of ideas. So if somebody has an idea, somebody has some money, come to the table, let's talk about it. All cards face up. Let's see what we can do. Lot of opportunity here for things to happen outside of the traditional tax increase, and I think we need to explore all of those.
Thank you. Mr. Haig?
This is a new development. We don't know what the scale of that impact the municipality is. We don't know if it's a dollar. We don't know if it's $10 million. We don't understand that yet. First thing is, understand what the impact dollar amount is, and then we can start scaling what the answer looks like. So to give a premature answer right now is premature, and we don't have enough information to be able to answer that correctly, because we just don't know what the size of the impact is. The best thing we can do is hear it, evaluate it, and then have the discussions with the Finance Director and her department to see where we can make the appropriate adjustments before we have to do anything else. We have to evaluate it first.
Thank you. The next question will begin with Mr. Kozlowski. "How do you plan to increase citizen involvement and decision-making in our town?"
So I think we already do a pretty good job of engaging citizens. I know that City Commission meetings are often well-attended, at least for certain issues. If it concerns your street or your park, I know a lot of people show up. We implemented Engage Birmingham, which is a system where people can provide feedback online. I think that's a good idea. I think as people spend more and more time online and in a digital environment, I think that the city should explore using social media more to promote when something is happening as well, because increasingly, that's how people engage with the public and with the world at large. So I think that those are important things to do. I think that hosting events, I know there have been strategic planning events in this very room. I think those are good, too, and just making sure that the word gets out. The newsletter is good, but I think a lot of people don't get it. So making sure that we try to use social media to amplify the voice so that all citizens know when something really important to them is being discussed is something we should definitely pursue.
Thank you. Mr. White?
I love the community engagement, and on the Multimodal Board, we had time, and we had speakers at just about every meeting for public comment. I think we need to benchmark and take a look at what all the different communities are doing. Things are changing so quickly, whether it's social media, or email, or however it is, but getting to the folks is really important. I lived in a small New England town at one point. They governed by open meeting. If you've ever experienced that, it's incredible. The whole town comes together. They have a debate. They vote right there on the premises. Now, I'm not suggesting anything like that, but that was just another way to get engagement. So we just have to pull all the levers, talk to some of the kids. They know all this stuff. Pull all the levers to get that engagement, and we'll come up with some good stuff for sure.
Thank you. Mr. Haig?
We actually have a really, really good social media platform that's used already. The city's communication department are on just about every single social media there is. The Engage, it's grown, grown from what it started from. I'm actually going to give a shout-out to Downtown Publications over there as well, because they do an extremely good job of sharing information in print and online. We here... So one of the outgoing commissioners has actually told us, because he works with other municipalities as his day job, he's told us how engaged our community is compared to others already, how much education there is, the skill sets in here. We are incredibly fortunate to begin with. So driving more engagement, we've got a way to go, but compared to our peers, we're told we're actually doing extremely well. I think we should just help continue to build on what we have with the skills that we have and with the tools that are already in place, rather than deploying new ones. There's still some room for growth, but we're doing really well. Don't misunderstand us here.
Thank you. Mr. Kolb?
So I actually said this at a recent meeting to Commissioner Haig. I think there's a lot of information that is shared, and I think it's good content, good information, not always consumed. I think... I think some of it is a marketing problem, because just communicating it doesn't mean it's consumed. The information's out there if you take the time to go get it, and I think a lot of people do go get it and are involved and attend the meetings and participate in things when it touches their front door, when it's not their front yard, not as important to them. And I think we have a marketing opportunity to change how that information is consumed and absorbed that would benefit all of us. So that's my.
Thank you. The next question will begin with Mr. White. What are your thoughts on the proliferation of e-bikes and scooters and pedestrian safety and also potential collision with drivers?
I'm seeing that all over the place. I mentioned I was down to visit my parents this weekend. Bikes and e-bikes and mopeds and the like are, they're all over the place. So we just have to continue to refine our plan that includes the changing environment of how people are getting around. People are trading their skateboard for an e-bike now. So I think everything we do, we just have to keep that in mind as we plan for the future, protect for that kind of thing, because they're everywhere now.
Thank you. Mr. Hague.
Well, it's a funny place. I actually asked basically a question about this this morning of our police chief, because I've noticed kids in my neighborhood riding around on electric dirt bikes, 10-year-olds. And I wanted to understand what the difference was, because I always understood it to be pedals versus no pedals, and that's really what it is. So I asked him, can we actually form some sort of education through our full-time schools' resource officer inside the schools to help these kids understand an e-bike is a bicycle, but an electric dirt bike, you've got to be of age, have insurance plates, you name it, because they are dangerous. And this was exactly the question I posed to him today. That's why I'm sort of kind of amused by it, because it's very, this isn't a posed question, by the way. I had no idea this was coming.
Nor did I.
So, I'm clearly, clearly in favor of us trying to figure out how to start with education before we do anything else. But I have zero interest in, from when I used to push the stroller on, zero interest in seeing someone getting impaled by an e-bike at Ridiculous Beach. It's just not on. Sorry. No. But let's start with the school resource officer, because that's the perfect conduit for us as a city to share it within the school system.
Thank you. Mr. Kolb.
I think education is part of it. I think they're flat-out dangerous on the sidewalk, and someone's going to get hurt. And I think enforcement of the rules, just the existing rules that are already there, needs to be a pretty high priority. I mean, I see down south old Woodward, these bikes coming at 30 miles an hour, no helmet, no nothing. They're going to hurt somebody, or themselves. So I think we've got to be vigilant and aggressive. And you know, if we're walking down the street and we're not going to get hit, and we've seen the person driving at 35 miles, stop and say, you know, you can't do that on the sidewalk. It's not okay. And engage with that person in a polite, courteous manner, but tell them it's not okay. It's just not okay.
Thank you. Mr. Kozlowski.
Yeah, so I definitely agree with Mr. Kolb that a lot of these vehicles are really too fast to go on the sidewalk. I should know. I have an e-bike, and that's how I did this to my wrist. So I always wear a helmet, and I always ride in the street, except Woodward, because that would be suicidal. So I'm a little bit torn, though, because I do have two young children, and every time I see a kid outside with friends instead of in front of a screen, I always think that that's a good thing. But keeping people safe on the sidewalks is really important, too. So I think that one thing we can do is we can work to keep our neighborhood streets slow and safe, so that parents feel comfortable letting their kids ride in traffic. Those vehicles are perfectly capable of keeping up with a car at 20 miles an hour. It doesn't take that much effort. But I think they stick to the sidewalk, because sometimes those cars are going 30 miles an hour in neighborhoods, and that's not safe for them. Yeah, so that's the main thing. And I think we should also explore the possibility of having more dedicated bike facilities near schools. I think these are mostly children who are using these vehicles, and I think that's great. I think it's great for them to have mobility, and I want to make sure that we can keep them safe and keep pedestrians safe as well.
Thank you. Next question will begin with Mr. Hague. What is your vision for keeping our neighborhoods sustainable?
There's different ways of looking at sustainability. There's green infrastructure, and then there's human sustainability. We need to balance both of them. I think we actually do a pretty good job already of trying to maintain trees, but there is, there is a group that wants to have a tree committee, and I actually fully support that, because that's part of the green side of infrastructure and sustainability. Beg your pardon. Human sustainability is making sure that we have an environment that we all wish to live in, one that's safe, one that's affordable, one that provides what we need. And that's an extremely large question to start answering, and I can't answer it in my remaining 30 seconds, 15 seconds, I beg your pardon. Just got the tab. But that's part of how we build our community into an even better one than it already is, because we already have a phenomenal community. That's why I moved here before I even had a family. I didn't even know my wife existed when I bought my house. I wanted to have a family and bring them up here. To me, that's part of our sustainable community, is building your family here.
Thank you. Mr. Kolb.
I think sustainability, to answer, sustainability is a very complex topic that encompasses a lot of different things. The business, businesses, the residents, how the community itself deals with it. So I do think answering it in a minute is probably not the best idea. Create more questions than it answers. But I'm supportive. I think, I also think of sustainability is, and one of the, what I find to be one of the most unique things about Birmingham, is I have a lot of friends that grew up in Birmingham and went to U of M with me. They all moved away. They went to California, they went to Europe, they went to New York, they went to Chicago. It's time to retire. What are they doing? They're all moving back. They're all moving back to Birmingham. They're not moving back to Ann Arbor. And that, to me, that is also creating a multi-generational, sustainable community that keeps coming back because of how wonderful it is and how wonderful we make it now. So I'll leave it at that, because my time's up.
Thank you. Mr. Kozlowski.
Yeah, well, I would start off by saying that we have a sustainability board, which the commission put together, and which my wife is actually currently the chair of. And they produced in the past, the Ad Hoc Board, a Birmingham sustainability plan, which has a lot of great recommendations about, about a lot of stuff that we've already talked about, actually, about things like flooding and impermeable surfaces, because we are, you know, living in a world where things have changed, and we know that from air quality, we know that from these torrential storms we're getting, we know that from 90-degree days in October. We can tell that things have changed, and we need to adapt to that changed world. Commissioner Hague mentioned street trees. You know, trees are just an essential part of this. I think another huge part of it is walkability. It's something that we all value. It's something that has value beyond sustainability. But in terms of being environmentally friendly, in terms of not wearing out our infrastructure, just choosing to walk or bike instead of taking a car is a huge step forward there. So I think we should make that as safe and fun and welcoming as possible.
Thank you. Mr. White.
Like Bill mentioned, lots of people come and go, and they seem to always end up back here. We just have a plan never to leave here, but the trees are a big part of it. We have a tree right in front of our house. I thought we were going to have to take it down at one time and replace it with a smaller tree, but that didn't happen, and it's beautiful to drive down a tree-canopied street. It's awesome. But all the things that come with saving the trees, like you've got to make concessions somewhere. But I think overall, making this a great place to want to come to, making it a great place to want to stay, and making it a great place to want to come back to if you ever have to leave for some reason. All those things, making it a sustainable community on the environmental side, sustainable community on the, on the community side, on the neighborhood side, all very important.
Thank you. The next question will start with Mr. Kolb. Do you support increasing the operating millage for seniors? The city currently only contributes 0.03 mils, $125,000, to senior services at NEXT.
So here's what I'd say is, I'm 100% supportive of providing our senior residents the services they need to make Birmingham the place they want to spend their life. I'm not necessarily supportive of going and looking for more money without fully evaluating what Oakland County offers seniors, and how do we incorporate that into NEXT or some other organization? How do we maximize these services that are already available to serve our community? So for me to say, without all that data in front of me, to say it's supported, I couldn't.
Thank you. Mr. Kozlowski.
I think my short answer here is yes. We really just pay a small fraction of what other communities pay towards senior services, and I think that, you know, Birmingham seniors deserve a little more than that. I think the total amount that Birmingham paid to NEXT was something on the order of $125,000 for the whole city last year. That just doesn't feel proportional to what our seniors deserve. As to what it should be raised to, I think that's going to depend. You know, NEXT is a consortium of other communities because of its former affiliation with the school district, or its current affiliation with the school district, I should say. So we need to figure out what their requirements are. They're moving into a new facility. What are their costs going to look like going forward? And I'm not saying, you know, the sky's the limit, anything is approved, but I certainly think that we can probably spare a little more than we do right now.
Thank you. Mr. White.
Like Kevin mentioned, I do believe when you compare us to some of the, some of the surrounding cities, some of the cities in our comparative group, we don't spend as much on our seniors, and I think that they deserve it. And here's why I say that. This is a great place to raise a family, like we did, right? Then it's, now we're empty nesters, for the most part. And we have a vibrant downtown, great restaurants, great places to go. When you're a senior, you deserve that. You deserve that same kind of thing, and I think we can, I think we can do a little more. And I think the city and NEXT need to get in the rowboat together, all row the same way. Again, like I always say, all cards face up. What do we, what do we need to do? How can we fund some of this stuff? What are some, some different sources? Public-private, sponsorships, all these different things. NEXT needs some help. Our seniors need some help. There's no doubt about it. So we just have to find creative ways to increase our participation with NEXT.
Thank you. And Mr. Hague.
So, Mr. Kolb said it. We need to capitalize on what's available through state and county, first of all, and I don't know that we've done that to the fullest extent. That's one of the points that we definitely are weak on. Next one. How many of you know I put together a business plan for NEXT to help increase their funding? Very few of you. Commissioner Baller does. He's put his hand up, because he's the one that asked me to present it to the Ad Hoc Senior Committee, and I had to go get legal advice from the city attorney to do that, because I appointed with six other people that committee. But that was how NEXT could generate more income without increasing any taxation on anybody. So there are pathways that exist. They're out there. They're not painful. Next one is, of the participating communities, how many of you know who pays the most? Birmingham does. So when we get the entry-local agreements updated with the new home that we've already said NEXT has, then NEXT's funding will automatically go up if everybody pays the same share that Birmingham does. Once we have that, and we've exhausted state and federal, state, federal, and county resources, then let's start looking at what others we need, because again, we don't know what the gap analysis is yet. It hasn't been done. So until we have that data, how much is the ask? We don't know.
Thank you. The next question will start with Mr. Kozlowski. What do you see as the top issue facing our city today?
It's a tricky one, but I think overall, the prize has to go to infrastructure. I think that we have a lot, you know, Birmingham is an old community for Oakland County. We have a lot of old systems that are beginning to show their age, and we are finding that these systems are really, really expensive to fix. And so I think that trying to find how we can increase our revenue, how we can raise the proportion and the overall quantity that we are contributing to these projects is going to become increasingly essential. We're trying to improve a lot of unimproved streets. We are trying to fix flooding in people's basements. We're trying to replace century-old water mains. All of these things are going to take a lot of money, and like I said, I think that we should pursue a combination, we should pursue mostly looking into the Triangle District and other mixed-use areas, trying to increase the tax base in those places, rather than trying to put the burden on residents. So that is, that is how I would tackle the infrastructure issue, and I think that's the biggest one we've got right now.
Thank you. Mr. White.
I think that infrastructure is the biggest issue that we face now. It's not a nice-to-have, it's a, it's a have-to-have, because if we don't, water stops flowing, sewers start backing up, something we've got to address. And I do think we need to find other sources of revenue to maybe accelerate our replacement of the infrastructure. It takes money, and there's only 100% of the budget. So we've got to be creative in how we do these things, but the clock is ticking all the time. Like, some of this stuff that's 100 years old, will it make it to 101? I don't know. But it's real and needs to be addressed.
Thank you. Mr. Hague.
I think if anyone says anything other than infrastructure, you're all going to fall off your chairs with surprise. So it is the number one. It is increasingly expensive. We all know that. I have no interest in increasing taxes until we absolutely are forced to, and hopefully that's going to be a while. But we, like I said earlier, we've already tripled our spend in the last four years, and we're still struggling to catch up. So one of the things I asked for, and we got unanimous support at the commission, was a community survey to find what everybody wants to spend the remaining slice of the pie on. We have a finite amount of money. If there's any leftover, what's the community viewing as its most important use of that money? And if the community comes back and says, "Infrastructure," it should go straight into infrastructure to help build it up. As for additional resources, yeah, it's an old, it's an old system, it's an old community. The city does a really good job of going out and trying to find as many grants as possible. You'd be astonished how many little grant here, little grant there, that they actually achieve to take the corners off of all the square edges. So I would absolutely continue supporting going down that pathway before we start doing anything else that takes money out of our pockets, because we all work hard for what we have.
Thank you. Mr. Kolb.
So I'm not going to make anyone fall off their chair, but I'm going to frame it slightly differently. I'm going to talk about responsible development that prioritizes infrastructure and neighborhoods. And that's, it's bigger than just undeveloped roads and sewers. It's everything that goes with it. It's the trees that we talked about. So I would hit a little bit broader than just infrastructure and responsible development that prioritizes infrastructure and families. No one's falling off their chair, so. Good.
Thank you. This is our last, I'm sorry, did I cut you off?
No.
Okay, all right. This is our last question.
I got the 15-second warning.
For the evening, and we'll start with Mr. White. Why do you want to be elected to the city commission?
I want to be elected to the city commission, because I think we live in a great city, and we can only make it better. Like you, you'll hear in my closing remarks, I started with the Torrey Community Association, so at the grassroots level, moved up to the multimodal board, where I got to experience working with the city and working with the residents. I think I'm uniquely qualified to step into this role. I'll do a good job. I'll serve with integrity and honor, and I'm hoping that you'll vote for me.
Thank you. Mr. Hague.
It's almost like asking for the closing statement straight away. You'll probably hear the same thing coming from all of us. So for me, I'm the only one where it's, why do I want to be re-elected? It's actually a really tough job. You'd be surprised how hard this is, and I saw our mayor's head snap up, because she said how tough that job is. It's unenviably difficult, but we want to do it. For me... For me, so you call it a family tradition for me, if it goes back to my grandfather, my grandmother, my father, my mother, they've all served in the communities that we, we lived in. And my mother laughed at me when I told her I wanted to do this. She said, "It's about time, isn't it? You took a while to get to this." I've enjoyed it. It's a lot of work, but I feel as though I live somewhere where I want to live. I said earlier, I chose to come to Birmingham before I even knew who my wife was because I wanted to come here to raise my family that I didn't have then. This is how I wish to continue giving back. I want to do another term because I think four years is too short to make enough of an impact. And also as there are going to be new members, continuity is also extremely important to help, help educate while they learn.
Thank you, Mr. Kolb.
So I want to do this because A, as Anderson said, I want to, want to give back and want to contribute. But I planned, planned to end my life in this town, so I want to be able to be very proud of where it's moved to and have some participation and sense of pride in what I was able to contribute to it. Great deal of experience over a lot of years, have worked in the city of Birmingham for 16 years since 2009 and it's given me a lot of wonderful things and it's kind of my way of saying thank you to Birmingham.
Thank you, Mr. Kozlowski.
Yeah, so I'm going to go with a little bit of a selfish answer and say the big reason is my kids. You know, since moving here, I've had two kids. Like I said, they're three and one right now. They only get to grow up once and this is the place they're going to do it in and I want them to be safe. I want it to be fun. I want it to be clean. I want all of the best things for them and Birmingham has so many wonderful things to offer them. I just want to, you know, put the cherry on top here and just make it a great place for them and for all of my wonderful neighbors who have been amazing to me and welcoming me to this community. So I'm going to leave it at that. Thank you.
Thank you. That concludes our time for questions. Candidates will now have one minute to make a closing statement in reverse order of our opening statements. So we will begin with Mr. White.
Sure. So thanks for having me. Thanks for coming out tonight so you could meet us and hear what we think about the issues that are important to you. And as I mentioned in my opening remarks, much of my time in Birmingham, I've been involved in our Torrey Community Association and in an appointed position on the multimodal transportation board. My experience with Torrey Communication, Community Association has provided me with unfettered resident feedback and how to successfully interface with the city on our issues and needs. As the multimodal transportation board chairman, I gained firsthand experience in how the city operates, gains public input and makes and implements decisions. So here's my commitment to you. First, I will always act in the best interest of the citizens of Birmingham. I won't do things any other way and I don't think my wife, Joy, will let me do things any other way. Second, I'll become a student of the issues that come before the commission so I can best debate, decide and deliver optimal solutions for all of Birmingham. And last but certainly not least, I'll be physically, fiscally responsible and spend your hard-earned tax dollars like it's my own money. So I humbly ask for the privilege of your vote with no hidden agenda, just a desire to share my experience, serve our great city and most importantly, effectively represent our residents with honor and integrity. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kozlowski.
Thank you all again for your time tonight and to the League of Women Voters for organizing this event. I know Birmingham, or we all know that Birmingham is a great place to live. I want to capitalize on the things that are working and fix some of the things that aren't. I want to double down on walkability and street safety so that kids and young adults and parents and seniors can all participate in public life even if they cannot yet or can no longer drive. I want a Woodward Avenue that is worthy of Birmingham, a beautiful tree-lined boulevard where people live, work and shop. Woodward Avenue should, or Woodward should be Park Avenue and instead it's I-75. On infrastructure and other issues, we need leaders who will take a long-term view. My daughter Stella will be graduating from Seeholm in 2042. I'm here for the long haul and you can trust me to make decisions that reflect that. I've demonstrated my commitment through my service as chair of the advisory parking committee as well as my focus on data and pragmatism. I hope to have the opportunity to bring these qualities to the city commission so I can make this city a better place for my family and yours. I hope to have your support. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kolb.
So my closing won't be a whole lot different than my, my opening, other than one thing. My commitment to you as Birmingham residents is I will be accessible. As a commissioner, your job is to represent the voice of every resident and to know the voice of the residents means accessible and available to listen, talk and hear. So that's my commitment to you. I'd like to thank the League of Women Voters for allowing us this time, Baldwin Public Library for letting us be here. I also want to thank you all again for participating in listening and participating in democracy. This is how it's supposed to work. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Haig.
I opened with thanks, I'll start the closing with thanks. I actually met Doug on that same Torrey Community Association many years ago and also was on the multimodal before I was on city commission, so been around for a while. But that also tells you, like I mentioned earlier, that we are city in name, but we're actually small. There's a lot of familiar faces in the audience. I've got friends that are on the library board as well. We're here for each other. We volunteer to do this. I want, I've done this for four years on city commission. I want to do it again because I don't feel I've done everything that there is that I can do to help. It's a choice, it's work, I enjoy it. And Bill stole my lines about being accessible because that's almost what I say is I try to be accessible and he stole that thunder from me. So I don't know, but yes, accessibility. I try to be as accessible as possible to anyone, anytime possible, day job constraining. And it's all about residents, it's resident-focused. These, these are not new themes for me. This is not something in this election. This started when I started previously. It's continuing because it's about us. We live here, we go to sleep here. This is our home. So let's try and help make our home even better than it already is. That's my goal. I've been working towards it, I continue to work towards it. And I would really appreciate your vote to help me continue with that journey for all of us. Thank you.
Thank you. The League of Women Voters and the Council of Homeowners would like to thank the audience, the candidates, the Baldwin library staff and Bloomfield Community Television for making this forum possible. Re-broadcast of this forum will be on the League of Women Voters Oakland area website and YouTube. The League of Women Voters is funded by contributions from concerned businesses and citizens. Our membership is open to women and men over the age of 16. This presentation is copyrighted 2025 by the League of Women Voters and can only be shown in its entirety. All rights are reserved. Remember, early voting starts October 25th or you can vote at your precinct on November 4th. Democracy is not a spectator sport. Now you can turn your phones on.